I'd like to call over the regular Planning Commission meeting of June 22, 2023. If we all stand and say, please, congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law. I thank you for that. Susan, you'll note the row, we do have two absences, and we do about it ahead of time.
Yes, Mr. Spiz and Mr. Bailey are excused. There is a quorum.
We have a quorum, thank you. We have to have approval of the agenda. Someone would like to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda dated June 22, 2023 at 7:00.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda that's supported by Mr. Ballard, made by Mr. Nold on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't think we have any conflicts of interest that's part of the agenda. We need approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission regular meeting on 5/25/2023.
I'd like to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission regular meeting dated May 25, 2023.
You mean a motion to approve?
What did I say? Yes.
Yes, okey dokey.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ballard to approve the minutes from the 5/25/2023 meeting and supported by Mr. Nold. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't believe there's anybody here for public comment tonight, I don't. So, public comment, I don't know if it's not for public hearing on this agenda, seeing none. Commissioners, comments, do we have any this evening?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, Mr. Nold.
I report, last time I was glad to see them working on Drainer Road. Appears that they're just about done with Drainer Road, they need to put some striping on it. It's encouraging to have some smooth driving, I just hope that the residents obey the speed limits.
So, you try to get your bicycle out down that road?
Just, you just have to start at the top and you just coast on down.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments from any commissioners this evening? I'm seeing none, so we're gonna, we don't have any public hearings this evening. We have zero unfinished business at the moment, and so we're gonna jump right into new business, which is our PC training workshop. I think we know who started.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about meeting decorum, Open Meetings Act. Commissioner Nold has already been through this training. It's our most popular training, we usually give it to every board about once a year. Some of it will be set hand in hand, probably won't have any questions, I'll try to get through that quickly. Other stuff you might want me to spend a little more time on, so feel free to stop me on whatever you want to ask questions on, and it should be pretty interactive throughout. Megan's gonna follow me, she, her presentation's a little more...
May I ask if you could just identify who you are?
Oh, I'm Brittany Ellis from the Kelly Firm, I'm your township attorney.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thanks for having me back. This is my first meeting back from maternity leave, so it's good to...
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
May I ask, we have some statistics on the results of the maternity leave?
Wait a minute.
Yes. I gave birth to a nine-pound baby boy named Avery Ellis-Keister on April 30.
Thank you.
Wow, where did it go?
I should've included a picture of him in my presentation, I was a miss. So, your planner's gonna follow me up, and she has a more specific training on Planning Commission statutory duties. We like to give these trainings hand in hand, a lot of times with Carla Orpman, because they go really nicely together and have a lot of overlap. So, with that, I will get started. So, first, we just like to start with this slide, because it's kind of funny. It's why does public procedure matter at a public meeting? A lot of public procedure advising is best practices versus actual law. You do have adopted Planning Commission bylaws, which we were talking a little bit about. You recently had a little issue where you had to review your bylaws for how many votes you needed for a rezoning. So, you should revisit your, you know, Planning Commission bylaws at least once a year, review them, what your requirements are under those. Our advising on meeting decorum is a lot of following Robert's rules. We find that that is generally best practice for running an orderly meeting. So, I'll play this for you as to why we like to give this training. I don't know if this sound will work. Doesn't look like it is. And if it doesn't work, we will just skip it.
Is there something on your left turn?
No, there's usually, I think there's a, an aux cord on the podium.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm not as tech savvy as my generation would apply.
Nice way of putting it.
I think this is an aux cord, but I don't know where it would go in.
You might have a computer that doesn't have one.
Yeah, we might. If we do, we can skip this part, it's just like a funny video. No, I don't think it is.
Ham and Maddy, it says.
Yes, so in this video, the public starts chanting "Ham and Maddies" because the meeting gets completely out of control, which we can see happening if you don't have good, if you don't have good decorum. So, tips for a successful public meeting, again, this is a law, this is best practices by following generally Robert's rules, and then of course your adopted bylaws. So, the most important thing is that the chair controls the flow of the meeting, they control the agenda, they announce the business to come before the board, and they have to recognize members who are entitled to the floor. So, that helps a lot with controlling the meeting and not having board members talking out of turn, not having developers or members of the public talking out of turn. We already kind of touched on this, board should be familiar with their bylaws. When in doubt, generally following Robert's Rules of Order is a good practice. A lot of people don't have Robert's Rules memorized, it's about a 200-page book, and you're never gonna end up in court because you didn't follow Robert's rules to the letter. Again, it's just general best practice. Always maintain control and decorum, we'll go over some tips later in this presentation about how you can accomplish that. This is usually the responsibility of the chair, but all members should assist. We're also gonna talk about following appropriate procedures for passage of motions and amendments to motions, and ensuring intent is clear in language of motions. We'll touch on that, and then Megan's presentation goes into a little more detail on that as well. This is another important one, which we'll talk about in more detail, I have a slide on it. Board members should refrain from commenting during public comment and avoiding back and forth with members of the public during public comment. Now, there are times when it's appropriate to answer questions from members of the public, and we'll go over when that's appropriate versus when it may cause you some problems or cause you issues with potentially a due process issue where you look like you're treating a member of the public differently than another member of the public. This is the last comment, I'm here kind of touches on that. Any board or chair response should be after public comment is closed, it should never take place during public comment, which again, we'll go into that in a little more detail. So, these are attorney general opinions that have been issued on public comment. There are certain issues with public comment that the Planning Commission is empowered to regulate, and you do, but via your bylaws. The big one is the length of time that members of the public may address the board. Part of your bylaws, this is three minutes. Why that's important is because when someone has a floor for three minutes, if you're having back and forth with them, that could look like you're taking up potentially some of their time, then there becomes question of do they get extended time past that three minutes? Are you answering that person's questions but not the next person who comes up for public comment? It's really important to be strict about limiting public comment to three minutes per person, and also not having any back and forth during that time. During that three minutes, that member of the public has the floor. There's also, you also can regulate designation of the time for public participation during a certain part of your agenda, which you do. You have a time for public comment on items on the agenda, a time for public comment off the agenda for items not on the agenda. That is the appropriate time for public comment. Generally, you shouldn't have public comment at other times of the meeting for the reasons we discussed. Mostly, you know, a view of being unfair. Yes.
You have to acknowledge that, so no questions? Does the law stipulate the minimum amount of time required to provide to the public for a comment?
It does not. Courts have said generally at least two minutes is reasonable, but there is no requirement under OMA to provide a certain amount of time, and there has not been clear direction from courts on what exactly that time limit is that board should set, so you have discretion. And under your bylaws, you have three minutes, which is kind of standard, that's a time limit we see, you know, on a lot of boards and commissions.
So, that's not gonna be an issue for us for three minutes?
No.
Okay.
No. So, the Open Meetings Act does prohibit you from placing conditions on the attendance of members of the public at an open meeting. What this means is you can't say, you can't attend our meeting if you don't give us your name and address. Everyone's entitled to attend your meeting. You may, the right of a person to address the public body may be reasonably controlled by rules reported by the public body in your bylaws, and it's reasonable to require a person to identify himself for purposes of public comment. So, you see the distinction there. You can't require them to identify themselves or give their reason for being here to attend the meeting. However, it is appropriate if your bylaws say that they have to, someone needs to state their name and their address, you can require that for purposes of public comment only. So, a lot of times, there's a question between the distinction. Easy rule is never kick someone out of a meeting because they won't give you your name or address if they're not participating.
Many times, people are gonna be out of meeting, and they don't get up and speak at all, they're just, they're witness what happened and what the conversation was, and...
Correct.
It goes on.
And that's completely allowed.
Yeah.
There, there's been issues with boards in the past who have had, like, for example, sign-in sheets and require people to put their name and address down as a condition to attending a meeting, that's where you run afoul of the Open Meetings Act.
You can, you can ask a person to sign it.
You can ask them, you can require.
Yeah, you can.
Correct. Shoot.
Chair?
Oh, Jenny?
Years ago, we had a public comment from members that were not in our community. That public comment was used as a gathering source for information to make decisions on. How does this play into that?
So, you can have someone identify that they're not from your community, i.e., give their address. You can't prohibit someone from not speaking because they're not a member of your community. They could be, they could be a business owner here, they could be some sort of other stakeholder where they don't necessarily own property here. So, you still have to give them the opportunity to participate in your public meetings.
I've never been, in my time here, in a meeting where we disqualified or asked someone not to speak.
Good.
We have, we've had situations where people have not revealed their complete address.
Yeah.
And that was important for the decision of the, of the board, I felt. Thank you.
The board can always take that into consideration in their decision-making. Okay, so these are things a board may not do. You cannot limit the subject or issues that the speaker wants to address. The second one doesn't really apply to Planning Commission, so I won't address that. But, you can't prevent a person from talking about a confidential or closed session topic, and you can't require, we already went over that, you can't require as a condition of attendance that a person register and or provide his or her name as a condition to attending a meeting. Okay, so this is a question we get a lot, some boards really understand this, some boards get confused about the difference between public hearing and public comment. The biggest difference is a public hearing is often required by statute for a hearing on a certain issue under your, or under your zoning ordinance. So, purpose of a public hearing is usually to gather input, information, and opinions from the public regarding a specific matter. So, the public hearing should only be on that one issue. It's required by law for certain types of land use decisions, including zoning changes, development plans, and special permits. And then during a public hearing, the Planning Commission's role is to listen to presentations from the applicant or their representatives and allow members of the public to provide testimony on the matter at hand. The Planning Commission then uses that information to, that they gain during the public hearing to make a decision. Public comment's distinguishable because it takes place during a particular time in your meeting, i.e., when it says it's time for public comment on your agenda. So, you have discretion when you want to schedule a public comment during your meeting. It's a less formal opportunity than a public hearing, or public comment is less formal than a public hearing. It allows public, members of the public to express their opinions, concerns, or suggestions on any topic relevant to the Township Planning Commission's responsibilities, so it's a broader scope. And it's not limited to a specific proposal or agenda item like a public hearing is. So, any questions on this one? Sometimes I get no questions on this issue, sometimes there's a lot of questions.
No, I think there's a, what people don't understand on the audience side, I think all the Planning Commission members understand, is when they're at a public hearing, they get to speak their voice in their turn, try to keep it to three minutes. We don't communicate during that time. They get to make their comments and say everything, then we digest it, and then we get our turn to speak.
Yep.
And that's where the confusion comes in, public hearing is different from public comment.
Yes.
So, that's to me what we need to make sure, I think everybody up here knows that.
No, and this is more relevant for newer Planning Commissions, to be honest with you, when you have a newly elected board. You guys, you've gone through public hearings, you've gone through public comment every meeting, so you're, you're hip to it.
Well, the public during a, either the public hearing or the public comment, they have a right to ask a question during that period, do they not?
100%, yes.
And that question has to go directly to the board chair?
Correct, it's directed to a chair. What I see a lot of chairs do, because you don't want to interrupt them during that time or have that back and forth, is they write down the questions during the meeting, and then they have a time either after the close of public comment or the public hearing, or during board, board or commission member comments, when they decide what questions they're gonna address.
Also, they don't have to answer the question.
No.
But, if they present a question, it's addressed after the public hearing is over with or public comment is over with.
Correct, so that you're not interrupting or causing someone to lose time out of their, that's their sacred three minutes to speak. All right, any more questions on that?
Nope.
All right, so this one's simple, this is just how to pass a motion, again, this is one that's more relevant, when you have a new board or commission. The member states the motion, another member seconds the motion, then it's time to debate the motion, the chair then restates the motion, and then the members of the commission vote. After the vote's taken, the chair announces the result. Now, this is following Robert's rules. If you ever, for some reason, have a situation where you deliberated before you put the motion on the floor, or you didn't go in this exact order, a court isn't gonna strike your motion down because you had improper procedure, right? This is just best practices. So, don't freak out if you say, hey, we didn't follow this exact procedure to a T, this is best practices under Robert's rules.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm reading the chart, or I'm reading the comments up there. Says the chair restates the motion and the members vote. Is that always the case?
Like I said, it's best practices.
Sometimes we have a very lengthy motion with a lot of conditions or something involved. We're not gonna restate that whole motion, I mean, that's not critical at that point in time, because if...
So, yes, as Planning Commission, you have, you have longer motions than other boards do. Again, you're not gonna have your motion struck down by a court because you didn't repeat it twice, okay?
That's no idea.
This is again, just best practices, because a lot of times, by the time you deliberated for an hour and a half, everybody's forgot what motion is even on the floor. So, that's when it really comes into play, because people forget what they're voting on, right? If it's been going on for...
I think it's clear for me to ask the board, excuse me, the commissioners, if they understand what the motion stipulated. I think that's what we want to know, does everybody understand what we're voting for?
That's fair.
Sometimes we ask that question, and then we go on and we vote.
That's fair, and I'm gonna go over what's really important, I think it's my next slide, what is really important about with regard to passage of motions. It's more your content than your procedure. If you screw up your procedure a little more, a little bit, like you don't go in this exact order of Robert's rules, right, you're not gonna have your motion struck down again, it's gonna be all about the content of your motion, which we'll talk about in the next slide. And then Megan's gonna go into great detail about. So, this one's the one I really get questions about, is how to amend a motion. It's actually a two-step process. So, the board or commission actually votes on whether or not they are going to amend the motion first, before they vote on the new motion that's on the table, okay? So, you're gonna put on the floor, a board member's gonna make a motion, I move to amend the motion on the floor. The commission's gonna vote on first whether they want an amendment, okay? So, that kills whatever the first motion was that was on the floor. You're then, you get a majority vote that you're gonna amend the motion, then you put the new motion on the floor. So, for example, if you have a motion up to approve a development, and the commission's discussing, and they don't think they have the votes to move forward on that motion, and they want to place an additional condition on it, you're gonna move first to amend your motion. You vote on that first, does everybody agree to amend it? After, if that passes, that's when you put the motion on the floor to approve with that condition. Does that make sense?
Does the person making the motion have to be the one to amend the mo, make the motion to amend?
No.
No, anybody can make the motion to amend.
Anybody can make the motion to amend. Now, if you have a motion that fails, this is a question I get a lot, if you get a motion that fails, one of the people who voted to, for the, against the motion has to bring the, a new motion. Does that make sense? That one's a little, that's, that comes up, okay, so say you're voting on a development, and it's four to three. Four to three, no. Someone who voted no has to then bring the next motion on whether you're, if you're gonna change your motion to try to get it approved, then they have to bring the motion, it can't be someone who voted yes.
So, bring vote no to amend the motion?
I think I'm getting it messed up right now. Go ahead. This is what happens when you have three hours of sleep with an infant out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Nold.
We haven't got into that. Sheriff Susan down there keeps us pretty much in line.
Okay.
The thing that I have questioned, though, is sometimes you get into those, and you want to vote no to cancel the first one, and that's not evident, and one of the board members will say, now, how we vote on this? How do we handle that? I feel uncomfortable with that.
Repeat that.
Can I, can I, I know what he's asking.
Okay.
A lot of the times, if it appears that there's confusion, Curtis and I both have told both the Township Board and the Planning Commission, just vote down this first motion and start all over with a clean slate.
Yes, so you can, you can do that, yes. So, there's confusion about a motion, and you want someone to bring a new motion, you can put that motion up, vote no, and then bring in your motion.
We've done that a lot for, to keep things real clean.
Mr. Chair, can I make one other point?
Yes, absolutely.
That might help you if you think about the amendments that she's going over, amending a motion? Because there has been confusion over if, say, John makes a motion and Cory seconds it, and then somebody wants to amend it, they've asked permission of the motion maker. But, if you think of it, if John makes a motion and it's seconded, that motion belongs to the whole board, it doesn't belong to John. That's why anybody can amend it, because it's not John's motion, it's the board's motion, once it's been.
Well, I look at, a motion is made, and then it's supported by someone, and then it's open for discussion. Now, anybody at that time, like you said, it's the board's decision to make a change if they want to make an amendment, anybody can speak up to make an amendment.
Right, but in the past, it has been, like, say Bob wants to amend John's motion, they've asked permission, John, is it okay? And John was like, okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. You don't have to do that. Because the motion isn't John's, it's the board.
Yeah.
So, if you think of it that way, it's a little bit easier to deal with how to amend a motion.
I could probably think of it that way. Does the board chair have the right to decline somebody's proposed amendment to a motion?
No, not if you have, not if you have a motion and a second, then it has to be voted on.
Well, I know that, but we're discussing it, and then I decide that I'm not happy with the motion and I want to amend it, can he tell me no?
No, so you have to vote on the original motion. Once that's over, then you can, if you can get a second, if you, you say, I wanna, I wanna make a motion to amend it, and you get a second, then the board votes on that motion.
That's after it's defeated the first time.
Correct.
You can't amend it before it's voted on?
You can, yes, but Susan's saying that the, the general practice of the commission has been to vote on the first motion on the floor. Like I said, if you ever screw this procedure out, don't stress too much about it, because it's best practices. For example, if you forget, for some reason, to pass your motion to amend before you put the next motion on the floor, your motion is still valid, okay? It's still a valid motion of the Planning Commission, don't stress about it, but it's just best practice following Robert's rules. And it oftentimes just keeps things from getting messy and convoluted, everybody knows that an amendment's coming up. And if you don't, if the board doesn't have, you know, enough votes to put the motion on the floor, or on the, you know, because they're gonna strike down the amendment. The motion to amend.
Mm-hmm.
So, but it's, what Susan said is acceptable, too. You can put a motion on the floor, vote it down, and then bring another motion.
Well, it keeps it clean for us, that way.
Correct.
I mean, I, I mean, I like what she's told us in the past, she's, she's helped us in the past to tell us, look, if you're gonna do that, vote it down, make another motion, get support, and then go from there, and then you got a whole new motion on the, on the board, you know, on the table.
Yep.
I like that idea, because then it kind of cleans everything up. So, would we do that for somebody, like, John makes a motion and he, he puts the wrong parcel number down in the motion, just a... Well, that could just be a correction. That could, we could just amend it in the process of voting on it.
Mm-hmm, correct.
In that case.
Your chair would just say, I want to make a clerical correction, that the parcel number is actually X. That would be sufficient for the record.
Oh, we don't have to officially amend it, he just makes a...
No, because you're not, I agree with that, because you're not changing the content of the motion, you're just making a clerical change that is substantive. Okay, so this is the most important thing, you know, for motions. If, like I said, if you, if you do, if you violate your adopted procedures, or you don't follow Robert's rules to a T, the court isn't gonna look so much that that is the intent of your motion. So, that's why you have such long motions, right? I know that irritates everyone. But, when a court, when we have to go to court to defend what your decision was of the Planning Commission, and we're arguing over the interpretation of a motion, the court does not look at your discussion. They don't look at your consultant reports, they don't look at what the commission discussed on the development, they solely look at the motion. So, that's why it's really important to have really strong motions that very clearly state the Planning Commission's intent. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I know you guys hate all those long motions we make you read into the record. Okay, so that was best practices, now we're gonna get into Open Meetings Act, which is actual law that you have to follow. I always say you're not in trouble when we get this, when we get this, because people say, well, are, were the attorneys called to give us this presentation because someone violated Open Meetings Act? No, this is just a good refresher, every, you know, board should be a little aware of Open Meetings Act requirements. So, the intent of the act is to make sure that what goes on in government is at, takes place at open meetings, right? You notice meetings, you put your notice in the newspaper, you tell the public what's on your agenda so that they can appear and participate in our public government system, right? So, why would you notice a meeting and have a public meeting where everybody's here if you're gonna do things not in a public meeting, which is what we'll talk about? So, that's the purpose of the act, is to bring everything to light and allow the public to reasonably participate in government. So, when is a meeting subject to the Open Meetings Act, right? So, first of all, the public body, the commission in this case, meets with a quorum present to deliberate or render a decision on something which a vote by the public body is required, and by which the commission effectuates or formulates policy. So, this can include any action, vote, or motion required to pass a resolution, order, ordinance, bill, or measure on which a vote by the members of the Planning Commission is required, okay? So, first of all, you have to have a quorum. So, what does that mean? You have to have enough members speaking to basically be able to pass the vote. I think in your case, it's four. Based on your membership, right? You're missing two members tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, that means your chair can call Commissioner Hunwick, and he can have a discussion of something on the Planning Commission agenda that night. That's completely fine. What you can't do is all get on a conference call and say, hey, how are we gonna vote tonight? Don't do that.
We shouldn't have done that, yeah.
That's not a teasing vote.
For the record, that was a joke.
Thank you.
Um, so, we're seeing more and more questions, which I'll talk about this more, especially in the age of email, social media. Um, a big thing is, don't put everyone on the planning commission on email and then talk about a decision that's before the planning commission tonight, okay? Um, just don't do it.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of questions we get about social media too. It's okay for a planning commission member to post, hey, public, this agenda item's up tonight, you may be interested, come comment. What we're recommending you don't do is have comments back and forth with the public stating your position. Why? Because not all members of the public have access to that social media chain, okay? Not all members can state their position, um, in that forum because we're not all on Facebook, right? Um, and if you were, then you, then, and you're debating on Facebook with a quorum, then that's a potential open meetings violation. So we say just try to avoid social media as far as discussing things. Your discussion should take place here, in a public meeting, whenever you have a quorum or whenever there's any question about whether the public has had adequate opportunity to participate. So, does anyone have questions about that? Because we get a lot of questions about social media use and email use.
Can I state something, Britney?
Yes.
Also, a reminder that when you get here before a meeting, if five or six of, seven of you are sitting up here, you can't discuss what's on the agenda for the meeting.
That's correct. Don't, um, the other thing is, is, you know, you guys are probably friends. You probably, you know, hang out, go out to dinner together. Don't discuss things on the agenda, right? Because what's going to happen is, someone's going to, in the public who's involved in the community is going to snap a picture of you and put it on Facebook and say, these guys are violating the Open Meetings Act. I saw them at Denny's discussing X development. So, just be aware, um, when you have meetings before that this is the appropriate forum to discuss them if you ever have a quorum present. It does happen. Okay, so this one doesn't, you, this commission doesn't go in a closed session too often, so I won't spend a lot of time on this. If, the biggest reason you'd ever go into a closed session is if you have, because there's only certain reasons under the Open Meetings Act that you are authorized to go into a closed session. The big one for planning commission is if you have an attorney opinion that you need to discuss on a legal issue, um, on a matter that's going to come before you that night. So that's a permissible reason to go in a closed session. You can't just go in a closed session for any reason. It has to be one of these reasons on this list. And again, the only one that really applies to planning commission is if you have an opinion letter from your attorneys.
Most of the times I saw a closed session was usually a township board.
It is, that's correct, because you...
Pretty much the general rule.
Correct, because they have litigation, they have sale of property. Those are things that you can also go into a closed session for. If you ever go in a closed session, it'll be because you have a really tough, um, legal issue before you that you need to be advised on before you go.
Usually legal counsel's in it with them.
Yeah, well, they have to be.
That's right.
You have to have a written legal opinion that you're discussing. And you can only discuss the content of that opinion. Um, so this is procedures to go into a closed session. Again, if you ever go into a closed session, you'll have an attorney here to walk you through it. Um, so we won't spend too much time on that. Again, this just starts, um, just touches on, um, email or other electronic communications. So if you, if you're emailing with the entire planning commission hitting reply all and saying, hey, here's what I think on this development, what do you think? You're, the court says, oh, that's deliberation, so don't do it. All right, questions?
I do have a question to ask.
Okay.
Regarding, uh, the situation that we were in the previous meeting.
Okay.
The Parks and Recreation was looking for a specific zoning change so they could do something. In my opinion, we were all in conflict because it, it's, we're part of the same community that's going to give him what he wants. And if the property owners don't want it, if I'm one of those property owners sitting out there, I'd be upset. So I was, in my opinion, I'm sitting there reviewing this, I would have thought that maybe a planning commission from another community should be the one handling that.
Oh, you can't do that.
So you can't do that, they don't have jurisdiction over the town, uh, over Oxford Township.
Okay.
Um, what I can tell you is that by law, a Parks Commission is a completely separate statutory body from the township. They have their own election for that board. They're not appointed by the township board.
But the general public doesn't look at it that way.
That's tough, but you're, you are the one who are, you know, you have a statutory duty to make planning and zoning decisions for the community. That does put you in a tough position, I understand that. But you have to try to separate yourself and be as unbiased as possible.
I think it's pretty clear in Oxford because they do have their own commission for the Parks and Rec.
They do, they have their own budget.
Right, they have their own millage, their own everything.
They own their own property.
A separate ID number.
Are they?
Yes.
Separate employer ID.
Oh, yeah, that does make it sound...
They do, they have a separate ID, and they have, they're completely separate. So, um, as a statutory body. Now, of course, we know practically there may be some overlap, but as a planning commission member, all you can do is disclose that to the public. Um, and then, you know, it's not really a conflict of interest because a true conflict of interest by law is if there's some kind of financial interest, which is an issue here, right? Nobody has a financial interest in that park's property. So, you have the authority by law and you're charged as a statutory body to vote on those matters.
Well, sometimes all the people that are commissioners on the, right here now, may not know if someone has an interest. Wouldn't that be up to that person to then come forward to recuse himself or something if they were involved in a case like that? I mean, we wouldn't know that John's involved in some matter.
Yeah, so actually, the, the procedure under the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act is that the, and then I think under your bylaws too, is that the commissioner has to come forward and disclose their conflict on the record. And then the commission then votes to recuse them on that matter.
That's it, that's clear to me, that one.
Item number five on our agenda takes care of that. We're supposed to step up and say if we have an interest.
On anything for that agenda.
Yep.
Yeah. But I, I mean, sometimes it doesn't always quite come out.
Okay.
Yep.
You have to think about it, like, what would a person's interest be that he wouldn't acknowledge?
By, the courts will get if you have a financial interest. That's what they're really looking for.
That's what we basically specifically ask, do you have a financial interest?
Yeah. Not just is Jim Bob my friend and I know him and I like him.
Yeah.
That's not, that usually doesn't rise to mind. So, anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Turn it over to May.
All right.
You're not playing it yet tonight.
Thanks, Brittany. Let me just get my presentation up. Um, I'm Megan Massamanak, I'm with Carlisle, Minnesota.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome. Let's see. There we go. Um, so, my agenda and the presentation I'm going to give for you tonight is talking about roles and responsibilities of the planning commission, um, making effective decisions and findings, and also risk management. So in terms of your roles and responsibilities, the land use decisions that you make do not occur in a vacuum. Um, all of these different folks are at play. Um, usually, the first line of defense or offense is your administrative staff and your support staff because they take in applications, um, and they're, get your communication every day. Um, and then those land use applications would go up to the planning commission. Sometimes they go to the Board of Appeals. Sometimes they bounce it between the two. Um, some go up to the township board, some do not. Um, so there's a lot of communication back and forth. Some applications are very simple. Some of them may touch all three of these bodies. And in terms of knowing what each of those bodies are responsible for, um, just keep in mind these broad principles. Your legislative body, say your township board, is responsible for appointments. So appointments to this board, but also to the Board of Appeals. Um, they're responsible for ordinance adoptions, two readings. Um, sometimes they're involved in site plan and zoning review specifically with development agreements. Um, and also with special land uses and anything dealing with the rezoning in terms of changes to the zoning map. Um, they greatly influence things through their budgets and personnel. How many people are hired? And how much money do you have designated to deal with planning and zoning issues? Um, the township board also is the approving body of the master plan, your guiding document, um, for any land use decisions. And also, there's other policy decisions that they may have along the way that greatly affect land use, such as infrastructure. You're building new, you're putting in new sewer mains, um, along, along the Pier Road. That's going to influence what happens and what can happen on those properties. So even those type of decisions have influences on land uses. Use the planning commission as an appointed body. The state law, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and Planning and Enabling Act put a lot of responsibility in your lap. First of all, you are supposed to, um, put together the master plan. Um, and so you're the main body charged with that. Um, and then also, you make recommendations on zoning ordinance changes. Whether they're, um, a really big bunch of amendments, like, just came through, um, or a very minor one that's coming before you tonight. Um, again, also, you're the main body to do site plan and zoning reviews, and those include special land uses as well. Um, and you're either approving or making recommendations. The Board of Zoning Appeals deals with variances, so granting exceptions to the rules, appeals, and they can appeal, somebody can appeal your decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals, or any staff decisions as well. Um, and they're in charge of interpretations. And then, a lot of times, the zoning ordinance or another ordinance will give duties to the Board of Zoning Appeals that aren't necessarily listed here. And your administrative and your support staff, that includes your township attorney, your planning consultant, your planning and zoning manager, um, your building official, um, your deputy clerk, um, all of these folks support you and help kind of keep the wheels of paper in motion. Any, I, I'm going to go back. Any questions on those roles and responsibilities and how they interrelate?
I'm still writing, but, um, no, I, I think it's clear. Sometimes I get confused on who's supposed to be managing what part.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Mr. London now is new with the township, and he's been going over a lot of procedural content to put us in the right direction and try to keep us moving that way. And Sheriff tells all that, but she doesn't want to talk to them.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what we're trying to do to get on track under the rules.
Yeah, and all of this feels, go back to your zoning ordinance for procedure, and then also to your bylaws. Um, because the zoning ordinance will list what exactly the planning commission duties are. And then in terms of that develop, and in terms of what you're supposed to do when, the bylaws are your best guide.
Well, bylaws are made by us, right?
They are made and approved by you.
Yes.
Yes.
They're not part of the legislative component that's promulgated from last year.
No, but I, I believe under, you know, the Zoning Enabling Act or the Planning Enabling Act, you're supposed to have them. A planning commission is supposed to have them.
Yes, okay.
Uh, which is a great segue into the next slide. Um, your statutory authority comes from two places. The Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act. I have these in a binder that's in my bookcase in my queue. I look at these probably at least once a week. Um, other of my colleagues who are younger than me have it bookmarked on their web browser. Um, it's amazing what's in there and what you find after 20 years of doing planning consulting or 20 years of being on a planning commission. Um, also, these are regularly amended. Um, so what was in there five, 10 years ago isn't what necessarily is in there today. Um, so these are good basesies to go back to. Um, and we'll refer to them, um, as we go through the training tonight. But also, you will probably see sites of those, references to those when going through a master plan process, or even in some of, um, our review letters. Um, definitely, I think you'll see sites from, of those, of those statutes from your attorney. Um, also, there's other statutory authority that comes into play. Um, federal laws, um, have certain parameters. Um, also, state laws as well, other than the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Some of those have to deal with licensed daycares, for instance, and things like that. Those laws can be changed. The Right to Farm Act could be changed, things like that. Um, or even things on an administrative level. Um, when you're talking about Right to Farm Act, there's the generally accepted agricultural management practices, which is a state policy that's changed every year. Um, so those can come into land use decisions. Also, there's case law, the federal and the state law. I know at least four gentlemen here have been at the ordinance revisions committee, at review committee at different times. And we talked about how your sign ordinance, your sign regulations need to be updated due to a US Supreme Court case dealing with First Amendment rights. Um, and so you can no longer regulate, you should no longer regulate signs. Based on, you have to read them. So a political sign and a real estate sign are really temporary signs, and they need to have the same regulations. Um, that's a preview for you, Mr. Ballard. You'll see some things coming, hopefully in the next couple of months to revise those regulations. Um, there's also attorney general opinions. Um, and your township attorney talked about those and have some of those from the Open Meeting Act. But those will also deal with land use as well. And then there's other local ordinances, um, that can come into play. And so it's a lot to keep. There's a lot of, it's almost like a spider web when you're dealing with land use and your land use decisions. You have a lot of different influences pulling and pulling in, in many directions. But basically, what it boils down to is, as in a body, you have two types of approvals. You have something that's called non-discretionary. And so those are zoning administration and site plan. And basically, if it meets all the rules, you have to pass it, whether you like it or not. Um, and then there are certain ones where it's discretionary. So a special land use, a planned unit development, amendments, um, either to the zoning map or to the zoning ordinance. And in those cases, you, when you look at those standards, you'll see that it's a standard that is not a yes, no. It's a gray area where you need to use your discretion. So, is this compatible with the surrounding land uses? You have to use some discretion in order to make that decision. And also, whenever you have a discretionary decision, your range of ability to say yes or no expands based on that gray. Um, and you had two rezonings before you in the past couple of months, which fall into that discretionary category. And I think if you reflect back on those cases, you can see where that gray is and where you were asked to make certain decisions about whether it was compatible and whether it was, and did it match the future land use plan or had circumstances changed. But something that's been, is often very tough for planning commissions and often, I also, you don't have to hear, but I've worked with communities where it's the township board who approves the site plans. Um, it's very tough for them and those non-discretionary opinions, not in the undiscretionary decisions, not to have opinions and not to have, and, and, and to kind of stay in the lane of black and white or yes and no. If it meets all the rules, you have to pass it.
Yeah, because everybody has an opinion.
Yes, everybody has an opinion. And you, as an appointed body, the reason you're giving the non-discretionary decisions um, is that you supposedly are insulated from the general public's opinion to a certain extent. Because every single elected official is, has a direct relationship with that public. Um, because they're going to be up for election in whatever the next election cycle is. Whereas you all are appointed by the township board. And so, in theory, that's supposed to give you some more space in order to make decisions that maybe meet the, they, they probably meet the rules, but may not necessarily be the most popular decisions.
I do have a question. Does the township board have the right to overrule any decision we make depending on whatever issue came before us?
Uh, I wouldn't say they have the right, they do have the ability.
So anything we decide on, no matter what it is, they can overrule us?
Um, with, if, if you're recommending to them, so for a special land use for, uh, rezoning or for a zoning ordinance amendment, they have three options. There's one, accept your recommendation, two, reject your, reject it and pass what they, pass something else, or to amend it. Or their fourth one is they can send it back to you.
Right.
Um, and send it back to you with instructions. Um, what most township boards that have a functional relationship with their planning commission do is that they will either follow your recommendation or they will send it back, um, with instructions. Um, and again, I've been doing this for over 20 years. It's been a rare experience where the legislative body took a very different action than what the planning commission recommended. And usually, that's a symptom of that there's not good communication between the two bodies. Where I've seen that happen most often is, um, with a master plan or with zoning ordinance changes. Um, because you, planning commission, will invest a lot of work. And then when it gets to the township board, it's a fully baked potato, and they don't understand all the decisions that got here.
And how it got there.
And how it got there and why it got there. So, one of a best practice often is to have more frequent communication between those boards up and down. Um, especially if it's something that's very complicated, like a master plan or, um, that's beyond just a, a simple update or a zoning ordinance amendment that's, if it's more than 10 pages, um, you probably should have some up and down between, um, the planning commission and the township board, um, before you get there. Before you, before you make final recommendations.
We can spend all kinds of times, uh, putting something together, but some opinions from people that are either trustees or elected officials may have an opinion of difference of what we're trying to recommend, and it just won't flow.
Mm-hmm.
It sinks quickly.
Yeah, and it's, and, and it's better to know it will float early on.
Yeah, I think so. Otherwise we're rocking the boat for no reason.
Mr. Phil.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
I, I would like to add, in Oxford Township, the supervisor that runs the, uh, the township board has been very kind to allow me to speak on some of the more important things that come up. Not that there are things, there are things that are more sensitive than others. So when they come up to the board, I'll do my homework, additional homework than here, to have a dialogue ready for the board, to let the board understand that there was great thought, uh, in-depth research on it for our position on some of those more, um, issues that the board might disagree with.
We, we think in some time, and I'm listening to John, but we've made some, we've written some ordinances that we thought were going to be good ordinances for the community and they just been shot down. And we've spent, we spent several months on a few of them, you know, trying to put those things together in order that we thought would be beneficial for the citizens as a whole. But like you said, the way it has an opinion sometimes doesn't work.
I would much, Mr. Frank May, I'd much rather see them come back with some recommendations than just to come back and say, try again. But, and our board has done a good job of communicating those across. I will get many phone calls on those things, why, why the board members are doing their work, trying to understand in depth why the decision was such from us. And those unanimous, unanimous decisions that we make here carry a lot of weight. And I appreciate those from this board.
All right. Well, our next subject is making effective decisions and finding.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good one to lead into that.
Um, and I just want to pause here. I chose the paint spot that's the background for this for a reason. Because sometimes, especially if it's a hard decision, I feel like, I know myself and maybe you as planning commissioners feel like that at the end of the hour and a half to date. Um, and at that point in time, you're really probably not in the best place to be very disciplined about everything that you need to do. But to piggyback on what your township attorney said, really at the end of that decision, there needs to be some rigor and there needs to be some discipline. So want to go over how you get there. Um, and basically, there are five elements of effective decisions. The first one is for, in the beginning, for you to expect complete information. I'll go on a little more of what that is. Second is for you to be prepared, and these are all before the meeting. Um, second is to conduct orderly, third is conduct the orderly meetings, have a proper deliberation, and then document the decision. And that's some of what happens at the meeting and then also afterwards and at your next meeting where you're approving minutes. So let's talk about what that preparation is. Number one, um, you should conduct the site visit if it is, uh, if, if it is a decision about a specific piece of land. Um, had a lot of back and forth, um, with planning commissions about whether you can enter the property, whether you can't, when you should go, things like that. Um, if you don't feel comfortable entering into the property, um, or we feel like you don't have permission, um, just at least drive by or park on the other side of the road and walk by. You also have Google Earth, um, or, and Street View. There's a lot of things online if you feel comfortable there where you can get some information. But nothing really substitutes for actually going there. Cause there's things that you'll see there. And also if it's something where it's a public hearing and everyone within 300 feet has been notified, those people who are coming to share their opinion, they live there, they walk there, they breathe there, and they know that experience. So if you can take some time and do that, um, that's more beneficial for you as a decision maker. Also, when there, um, or in general, to avoid expertise contacts. And so what that means, um, is that don't talk to the applicant while you're there or don't talk to the applicant about what the decision is. They may come out and greet you and talk to you, especially for zoning board of appeals members. A lot of times that, that's more apt to happen. Um, a lot of times in your line, in, in, in your service, um, as planning commissioners, it might be that it's the developer who's approaching you, um, offering you to take a, a site visit to a similar development that he or she has built, things like that. You need to avoid those. If for some reason you have had an inner, an interaction with them, when you get to that agenda item or your agenda item five, you should disclose those at that time. Um, and I'll make sure, I may find wrong, but if that does happen, then disclose it. And then the planning commission can make a decision, um, going on from there. And nine times out of 10, if you disclose it and say, I had this conversation, I said I couldn't talk about it, I left after my site visit, et cetera, et cetera, that will be fine. What's worse, again, is a situation that your township attorney talked about, is that you talk to this person, someone snaps a picture, because everybody has a phone in their pocket, and, and they make an assumption about what the conversation was about. Um, so, any question on that, on expertise and the site visit?
What about a resident?
So a resident is, is the same and, and, and this is in a later slide, but basically, they could ask you some questions. You should direct them to staff and to hear to review materials or where materials might be available online. Um, under no circumstances should you say which way you would be thinking of voting or anything to say that, uh, it, whether, and that would be, I need more information and I'm thinking of tabling it or yes or no. All of that disclosure of your opinion should be here in an open meeting.
So we can't ask a resident a question regarding their concerns regarding the issue that's coming before us? That's a.
So it's not, you're not breaking the law when you do that, okay? If you're having a conversation with the resident, it's not best practices. And let me tell you why. We recently had a board, a board member who had an email correspondent with the resident basically saying, I'm not in favor of this development and here's why. Okay, so then eventually the rest of the commission found out that there was that correspondence. They had found out about that correspondence, it would have hurt, may have hurt their deliberations because they don't have any idea what this planning commissioner's thinking or whether this discussion with this member of the public changed their mind. Um, so now the deliberations aren't open in a publicly noticed meeting. That's why you notice your meetings so that everything can be out in the open. Um, so you don't want planning commissioner members making decisions with information in mind from either a developer or the member of the public that they're not sharing with the rest of the commission. You're creating a record of your deliberations and a lot of times, as your planners stated, this is, and you discuss kind of about that interface between you and the board, you need to create that record of your decision so that when it goes to the board of trustees, that they have an understanding why the planning commission made that decision. And if you're having communications that not everyone's aware of and basing decisions off of it, it interferes with that process.
That makes sense to me with, uh, say, the developer. But I look at, our role here is we're serving the public of this community, the residents of this, are we not?
Developers, sometimes you might feel that that development's in the best interest of members of the.
Well, that, that's very true. And that's one of the questions I have to ask is, because in the past, we turned down a development because the residents came out in huge numbers opposing it. And the majority of the members in this commission were, thought it was the best way to go.
That's, that's.
And, but I turned it down, but only because the residents were adamantly opposed to it.
That's where your discretionary versus non-discretionary decisions come into play. There's going to be times where you have to make tough decisions. Because under your zoning ordinance, it says if developer meets X, Y, Z, you have to approve it. There's going to be other times where you can take the public's malcontent into consideration as to whether it's best for the community and it's appropriate to vote no on that development. But you can't just say, well, you shouldn't, as a planning, if you say this in your head, keep it to yourself. But as a planning commission member, you can't just say, well, I just don't like developers, so I'm just going to strike down every developer.
No, we still have to have findings of fact. I mean, if we're going to do a PUD or something along that line, we have to be able to back that up. It's not just our opinion. We have to make sure we notify and identify those findings of fact to make that decision. And I think what Penn's done, but we've all been there before, where we may or may not like something. We can't really talk and give our opinion out loud that way, especially in the public. That's the worst thing you can do. You're confronted with someone out in the public in a grocery store and they start asking you something, you say, oh, you know, like, I gotta get out of here.
Yeah, and, you know, Mr. Honwick, I can understand the instinct to ask clarifying questions to somebody, especially if they live next door or in the area. Um, I would also then, if I were in your shoes and were tempted to ask that, I would ask that person, can I, if I ask you this question, can I please share it with the entire planning commission? Whatever your response is. Because then you're bringing all that information there.
So that's, that's okay in your mind then?
To me, I'm a little uncomfortable. I could understand why you would do it. Ideally, what that person would do is either come and talk at the plan, at, at the public hearing, if it has a public hearing or during a public comment, or, or, and/or they would submit something that's in writing so that everybody can see it. And then as that decision travels on, that opinion travels on with them. Because if it's just a conversation between the two of you, then as your township attorney was saying, that doesn't get into the larger decision. And then that person's voice doesn't travel with the whole decision.
Um, but I, I guess the way I'm looking at it, if I'm, if I visit the site and I'm trying to understand why somebody might be opposed to it, because I got a perception in my mind why it benefits the community and it, it shouldn't. And this resident comes up to me and says, I do not, this, this development should not go forward. I'd like to know why he would say that. And if he's got some valid reasons, then give me the opportunity to research those before we have our meeting.
Mm-hmm. And then I think what we're asking then is if in your situation, you would then.
Disclose it.
Disclose and share that conversation.
I get that, but I would think that individuals' opposition to it, if they have valid reasons, gives me an opportunity to research those reasons and look at it from a different perspective, from their perspective.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because they live there, I'm not.
Right, no, yeah.
You get caught up in some things. I had a knock on my door, doorbell rings, whatever. There's like a group of people out front of my house at the front door. Well, they wanted to put a cellular tower in the township park. And these people were negative, completely against it. They didn't want to have to look out their backyard to see it, because our backyard's back up to the township park here. And I said, and they asked him my opinion, I said, isn't it great? You know, they want to put a cellular tower. And these people just looked at me like they wanted to shoot. And they turned around and walked away and said, that guy's an idiot, you know, and that kind of stuff. Well, I was on the planning commission at that time.
Hmm.
So you, you know, you gotta be, you get caught up in stuff sometimes, almost accidentally. And I thought, that's my opinion, you know, because it could be beneficial to the community. It could provide the service that we don't have in certain areas and stuff like that. And plus it provided money to the actual park commission themselves for the lease of that land, which I thought was beneficial. So I think they were looking at the thing differently, but they just didn't want to see something in their backyard. Well, the trees don't let you see it anyway. I mean, stupid. See, you gotta be careful what you say.
You have to be careful what you say, and then everybody makes mistakes.
Yeah.
And, and then.
I've done.
It's okay to ask for grace and the best thing to do is if you make a mistake of this type of nature, is to disclose it when that, when it comes up.
Yeah.
Um, and then you can always lean on your, your consultants and your, and, and, and your township attorney.
Our contractual people.
Your contractual people, I mean, and, and that, and that is, and ask questions. You know, we're available to you at any time. And also to review your, review your materials. Um, and some of them get long, especially if you've got 30 pages of zoning ordinance amendments. Um, but, um, it's important to budget the time and take some time to be thoughtful about those.
It's a lot of pages for the sign ordinance.
Yes, it will be a lot of pages for the sign ordinance, likely.
Geez, oh, geez.
Um, so then we get to the meeting. And some general meeting rules are to keep order, uh, stay on subject, which again, sometimes is hard. Um, trying to eliminate the misunderstanding of outcomes. And that lot goes back to making sure motions are clear. Making sure that after we've been talking for 15 minutes, we all understand what, 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 what decisions are being made or what opinions are being put forward, what information we're basing it on. And also to maintain fairness during the deliberations as it really, our whole system keys off of treating everybody in the same way. And how do you do that during a meeting? And that goes back to your deliberation process. So rules for speakers, um, so if someone's approaching the podium like me or the applicant or even the, and the public, if there is either public comment or a public hearing, is there should be a degree of formality. Um, so you'll notice that I'm not referring to your township attorney or to Mr. Honwick. It's not, or Brittany. Um, and they do that for a specific reason. And that's that degree of formality. Um, also, all comments should go through the chair. So Mr. Berger is, everything goes through him, whether somebody wants to ask a question, respond, answer, or things like that. And also, he sets the stage. Um, and as the chair, you have a lot of discretion in terms of setting that stage and giving information to people, um, as to what's going to occur and where it's going to occur and how their, how, how what they shared is going to be used and when they'll be responded to. Um, and you do do a good job of that and you have some paragraphs that you read, um, or look to in the beginning. Um, but each of those should be thought out and you may need to want to, based on the size of the crowd or what's going on, move those a little bit in order to make sure that you're laying out those good rules for speakers. Um, also limiting that speaking time, you're treating everybody fairly. Limit the number of times speaking. Um, when we had the conditional rezoning for MI Homes, I think you had several people who wanted to speak many, many times. Um, you can set rules for that in your bylaws. Um, also, at times you can, if, in, some communities where I've worked, in their bylaws, they allow a spokesperson for a larger group to have a larger set of time. Um, because, and that often is a good thing to do, especially if you know that you have organized groups that are coming to present um, or that you have a lot, a very controversial issue, um, that's had, that has caused people into organized, into an organized group. Because otherwise, what I've literally seen is people kind of doing a relay race during public hearings where they're handing scripts to each other so that they make sure they get everything in. Um, so thinking about, you know, think about the past four or five meetings that you've had. Have those gone the way you wanted? And do you have the right, if they haven't, what are the right rules for speakers? And then there's different rules for you. Um, you all know each other well, you've worked together for a long time and it's easy for you guys to have a very casual conversation. But what you do do a good job is that you run those comments through the chair. So you always ask Mr. Berger. You also deliberate in the open. Um, each of you should be allowed to express your opinions. Um, but when you're making decisions, those should, you should use ordinance standards. So it's okay for you to express, there's a lot of public here tonight that's in opposition. I feel, and, and I thought this when I visited the site. However, when you're looking to make a decision, so let's say it is about something where compatibility is in play, you could, rather than saying, the public's against it, it could be, I, we're making a finding that this isn't compatible with adjacent land uses, um, in part due to the public testimony that was here tonight at the public hearing. Is that additional where you're linking it to the standard, um, rather than, um, it's a little bit of a planner's nightmare and I'm sure it's an attorney's nightmare when somebody says, I'm just voting against it because that's what the public wants. It's not anywhere in the zoning ordinance and it's really, you're, you're getting a, you're getting a big hurdle to your township attorney at that point.
So I have a citizen, they can't make a meeting, they sent an email in that afternoon and they want it read in the record. What's, what's the most cardinal way of doing that?
If, if you have the ability.
Susan read, I believe, several the last time. I forgot how many we had.
Yep.
And, and, and that's okay, right?
That's, yeah.
That's the perfect way to just resolve that issue.
That is great.
Sometimes it can be redundant, but it doesn't matter, it still has to be read.
Right.
It has to be read.
They don't have to, well, I think it should be read for the public record for a public hearing.
Most communities will read them out loud.
Yeah, she did.
A lot of communities, if they, if they come in before a Friday deadline, they'll put them in your packet. Um, and if it's part of that packet, um, that's, uh, an official document that goes out, it's on the website, it's available here, it's, it's, it's available under the Freedom of Information Act.
Well, the repercussions of not reading it. The repercussions of not reading it, and the person says, you didn't even read my comments into the record, it makes it worse on our point, or my, at least from me.
Yeah.
To say back to the public, well, you know, we didn't think it was a big deal. Well, you can't do that. I mean, you know, that's my opinion again.
And, and you, the chair has the discretion to, to say, I'd like this to happen.
I think it's just an easier way of kind of getting it through and getting it through the process to say you did it.
Yeah.
Because if you don't do it, it makes it worse. Makes that part of it, makes it worse.
All right. So you've had your deliberations and you're going to get to decisions and motions. Your township attorney did a great job of talking about those. We just wanted to note that there's two types, there's main and secondary. So the main brings the subject to the floor, they're amendable and debatable. Secondary motions modify a main motion, and they may be amendable or debatable, you don't have to. So a commentary second, secondary motion is an amendment. As you discussed, you really don't tend to do amendments. What you tend to do is vote it down and have a fresh one. Also, a secondary motion is a motion to adjourn or for recess. When, yes?
Work quick. All motions that are seconded have to be voted on.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And, but a motion could fail if it didn't get a second.
Correct. But I'm just saying, if it's, if it's seconded, it has to be voted on?
Yes.
Well, when everybody goes numb, and we don't get a second, we know it's not going to make it.
So during debate, the chair recognizes the speaker. And the chair can limit the number, the amount of time for each person speaking. And they can also say, I want to hear from everybody first before I'm going to recognize somebody to speak for a second time on this. Also, you shouldn't carry onside conversations while someone else is speaking, whether that's passing notes, or whispering to each other, or...
Can you see what we're doing?
Or texting. Or texting, or instant messaging. As you know, I live outside of Ann Arbor, and there was a scandal a few years back with, with city council members who were texting one another or instant messaging one another on their laptops during, during city councils. Those were foiled and everyone was embarrassed. So just pay attention to what's going on and who has the floor.
You can just draw a little piece of paper with a note on it.
Right, no, anything you type in, never going away. And then the common modifiers to speaking order is the maker of the motion speaks first, and no members permitted to speak twice. But again, these are, these are general, these are best practices. And sometimes you vary based on the decision, how many people are here, the degree of formality needed. Again, we talked about stating to the subject. Sometimes this is hard, and I think you've alluded to it, that you're debating issues, not personalities. And also, sometimes it's hard not to attach an opinion about something when it's not a personality that you care for, or that maybe you've had a poor interaction with before. Also, as I said before, use formal speech. A lot of planning commissions refer to me just as Megan. I figure, because I do my job so well, I'm like Beyonce, I just need one. But I think if we can all, again, especially with a large group, it's helpful to keep that formality. Also, you can motion to limit or extend the times on debate, especially if something's going long. Someone, any one of you could make a motion to limit the debate to 15 minutes or whatnot. And you can motion to immediately close that debate is also possible. There will be times where you feel like, I'm sure you've experienced that, the conversation's going in a circle, and what you really need is a motion to, to move, to move from where you are. And those are tools that are available to you. In that meeting, also keep in mind that you're the face of the township. We don't have any members of the public here tonight, but there is a camera. People watch at all different times. And so what's said here is also broadcast from here. And that's why it's really important to respect each other, and you do a great job of that, and respect the public, which you also do a very good job treating everyone fairly. And also then again, keeping those actions simple and understandable. And again, when you get later into the night or when the sake of the debate, that's when that gets hard. And so if you, if you feel like that's getting hard, it's worth pausing for a beat and saying, okay, are we all clear on what we're talking about, or what's the decision before us? Something, when do you delay or postpone? And this is always, or table, this is something that is always very tempting. It's perfectly appropriate if you have an incomplete application or incomplete information. Some of you may argue, if the application was incomplete, it shouldn't even get here, right? If extensive changes are necessary to comply with ordinance standards. So if that laundry list from the engineer or from us, or the township attorney has more than 10 or 15 items, it is fine to delay and ask the applicant to come back. Also, when the applicant requests the delay, and they might do that in writing, and we've had that a couple of meetings in the past six months. Also, when necessary information from an agency or an applicant hasn't been received. So that particularly might come into play for final site plans, if you need something from MDOT or Eagle or the Road Commission, or the Water Resources Commission, in order for, in order for that not to impact the design and you to feel comfortable with that final site plan.
Can we back up a minute?
Sure.
Okay, you brought up a question. We approve a site, and all of a sudden it goes to MDOT. And MDOT says, no, we're not going to approve that, ingress and egress from that point.
Yep.
Now all of a sudden, our site plan that we approved isn't going to work with what the petitioner has recognized with us. And now it goes to a different entity, and all of a sudden it can't get approved. So then they want to tell them to change it, and technically, he needs to come back and amend the site plan with us, correct?
Correct.
That's very difficult. So I, I like to say, I like preliminary stuff, kind of, with the idea that we approve this preliminarily, but we're not going to file approval because we haven't heard from these other entities yet.
Yeah.
And is that a better way of trying to keep us in line? I guess I'm trying to say, like, we don't always do that here.
Mr. London has been talking with consultants and township attorney and township engineer about how we have that development process.
Yeah.
And it's been agreed amongst that group that, and we'll bring this to you over the summer, in the upcoming month, that a preliminary site plan, keep that there, and then ask everyone to go through engineering and all their outside agency approvals. And once they have those, then submit for a final site plan.
Wow.
Rather than...
So then we would see the final plan that would be accepted by everyone else?
Yes, yes, yes.
Eagle and all.
Right. And because part of the problem also is that a development is getting a preliminary site plan. They get all their ducks in a row to meet the township's ordinances. They get their final site plans, and then when they get their final site plan, they feel like they should get building permits right away. But as you pointed out, for instance, with MDOT moving a driveway, or maybe not allowing two driveways, only allowing one, then that significantly changes the site plan. There are things within the zoning ordinance that allows some administrative approvals of site plans when an outside agency has required something else. So there are ways, but we just felt like, as a group, that if they could get their engineering and all of their outside agencies done in between preliminary and final, that would be a better process. And we're in the, and we, working, led by Mr. London, are looking at what policy changes need to happen at the township to enact that, and that may be a few zoning ordinance amendments as well. Which is off topic of this. So what's not appropriate to delay is when that can be handled, when receipt of another agency permit can be handled as a condition. So usually your Water Resources Commission, if your township engineer is comfortable, that's something that, that can just be a conditional approval. Or when there are some minor changes to the site plan that wouldn't affect the site layout. Let's say they proposed a fence as a buffer screen, and the planning commission felt that made a condition of approval that it's replaced by an evergreen screen instead, that that would be, the planning commission required that in terms of the site plan. That could be a condition that doesn't necessarily need, that you may need to revise and resubmit. Any questions about delays, take, when to table, when to postpone? Motions, these should be phrased carefully to withstand scrutiny from the court. A lot of times your motions are drafted by your township attorney that you work out from a base, so you have those, you're on a good start with that. Susan keeps you in check in terms of ensuring everyone's clear on that motion, and that references relevant sections of ordinance. And then also note that conditions can be imposed on any zoning decision except for rezoning, a conditional rezoning or rezoning. So if it's especially a new site plan, you have that ability to condition the approval, as long as that is conditions related directly back to a standard or requirement that's in the zoning ordinance. So there's a couple of musts, and these are all listed here. So site plan, name and number, the date of the plan, the result, findings and supporting actions, any conditions, especially with timetables. And as one of the people who, you know, it's Carl Whitman, we had to switch in staff in terms of people who are coming to Oxford Township. So things that Mr. Michelle's had been part of with you as an approval for planning commission, now they're coming from final site plan. I'm looking back, I don't have the context that he did, so I'm looking back at motions. And if, if there's timetables or if there's specific things, the more specific things that it can do is you're, you're writing for your future staff or future consultants a lot of times, who may, you may probably have not even met. Because sometimes it could be, especially between that preliminary and final, it could be six months or a year in between when they're coming back. So you're, you're not only writing for potentially a judge, you're writing for staff who are later administrating things. Justine.
You lost.
Okay. So for instance, what was the one that just...
Let me ask Mr. Chair a question. We have a timeframe on that. There's a timeframe of the stop date.
Right.
So what you're saying, I understand, but why are you saying?
I'm saying that you should keep that timetable in there, or the stop date. So you have some stock things in your motions about this is how long it'll last. I'm saying to keep that, or, and to keep levels of detail. So some of them have been about lighting and what the Kelvin should be, the K-values. So it's much easier for staff, when we're looking back at a motion, or consultants, if that motion says the K-value shall be this, rather than the K-value shall be, you know, the K-value should be what's in this letter. Because then I have to go back and switch that letter, I have to find that letter, I have to...
Most of the time, we don't get to that level. We've been trying to keep it, working as the attorney at the upper level, referencing the letters of our consultants.
Right.
And engineering staff.
And so is it that all of those conditions are met within those standards? Is it, or is it that those need to, sometimes they've been a little wishy-washy in terms of whether it required it or not?
So I can answer that. So what they're doing now is instead of listing every single condition that planner, township attorney, township engineer, fire department have, they just incorporate those reports by reference, and then they're attaching those reports to the minutes. So then when you pull the minutes, it should have all the consultant reports attached.
Okay.
Because the motions were getting like 10 pages long.
Do you think?
They were a little wordy.
They were a little wordy.
But I, if I could continue.
Sure.
We're working very, very hard, and we've had in the past, to streamline those motions, but with the reference back to the engineers, consultants. So five years down the road, when we did, we did this decision at this piece of property, we, we could go back to all those documents because it's part of the motion.
Right.
Yes, and that just started about four months ago, four to six months ago, we started doing it that way. So you'll probably see, when you pull older minutes, that they don't have that continuity.
And, and that's what I'm referencing?
Yeah.
Okay.
But a lot of times, we put very specific dates on very specific letters. So we say, our consultants referencing, you know, this, this letter from this date, along with, let's say, the, the fire marshal's report of this date specifically, to help streamline it, but be very specific on the details that were in those letters.
Yeah. And that is a very good practice, and we encourage you to keep doing that. So it took one of your motions from your last ten minutes, and was looking for all those things that were musts. And you can see the decision is lit up in blue, so to recommend denial, the approval type, rezoning from C1 to RM. And then for the property, then that had the parcel numbers, and then based on a specific finding. The one thing that wasn't in here, but it was at the top of the minutes, is the rezoning number. And so that wasn't necessarily in there, but if you read the whole minutes, you would be able to see them. So you're doing a great job, you do a great job as practice. There are many communities where I've worked where they don't put in this level of detail. So keep doing what you're doing.
But I think that comes from a couple of things. I think it might come from experience, like of writing up, you know, because, you know, because I'm probably one of the, one of the newest members, and coming from experience and coming from hearing those things. But also at the same time, you have to kind of do it on the fly sometimes because you don't know what the decision is, but you just have, because you don't know how you're going to decide on it. So you kind of have to, you're writing it down as you're kind of thinking about it and everybody's talking. And so it's, but I'll keep that as like a cheat sheet almost, saying, hey, make sure we include X, Y, Z dates, letters, things like that go through.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, go ahead, Dan. Since we brought this up, go back a slide, please. And I know it's 8:28, so I'm sorry. On the bottom, I, one up one, we're going to use this as our test. I had problems when I went home and prepared this package to present it to the township board, because we said that we referenced does not meet all factors relevant to the petition pursuant to Section 18. We didn't identify those factors. We didn't, we didn't, when we did our finding of facts, we, we talked about it. We all voted unanimously in, in regard to that, but they're not listed. Is that something that we need to list in the future, or is that something that...
So if your records set forth your fact finding, really by referencing back to section, the section of the zoning ordinance, that will come in by reference if we ever had to defend your motion?
Yeah, it was under 18.3. So I think what he referenced was that part of this section of the ordinance. He said you have to add this for finding's effect. And then like you said, you would go to that section and go, these are the reasons why.
Correct.
Because we, I don't think we have to state them all individually.
You're fine. So I'm coming from my other job, when I take this to the board.
Yeah.
I went to the video, YouTube, OCTD did a great job, and I went through there and I wrote those down, so I add those in case somebody asks at the board on it. So we could do that, that could be done if it was necessary down the road.
Correct. And us as our, as your consultants as well, we, I would never submit a rezoning to a board, and I've seen your planner's letters as well, they set forth all the standards and lay them out of the zoning ordinance, so they have that in front of them.
Okay.
From a practical perspective, I do have planning commissions that put something like this on the back of their agenda just for the planning commission, so that when they're doing, when they're, you know, setting forth the motion, they have a cheat sheet for it.
Reminders.
Reminders. So that's something that we could do for you if you're interested, so that you can reference it easily.
The 8:29 comment is, I've taken, taken on, you've been very helpful with streamlining our process. We had great dialogue six months ago on how we better the process to reduce the time here at the board in the reading it, but make sure that we covered all the bases in short paragraphs. And the Kelly firm has done a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Conditions, they, they can be... Conditions, they, they can be attached to any affirmative decision, so you're saying yes. You wouldn't put a condition on saying no. And they must be reasonable and bear relationship back to the review standards. So that you have to be able to get from point A to point B, and what, and why you placed a condition. Oops, all right. General zoning decisions is those decisions that need to be supported by evidence. I think we've said that pretty much over and over. And then your experts provide an invaluable service. I know that sounds like, you know, telling myself and your township attorney, your township engineer, but we're, we're here for you to help you make the best decisions that you can. So again, don't hesitate.
No, but I appreciate those summaries, because those are important to me and help me make my decision. I mean, they're valid.
Well, I'm happy to hear that.
If you'll just read them. Well, they come back to the point of preparedness and preparation. I think one of the most important thing of this whole thing is being prepared ahead of time.
I like what she said way back when you should visit sites.
Yeah.
That's very important.
So, and when dealing with the public, a lot of times, I know that many of you understand this, but the right to control land is not absolute. And you're, you know, you're making hard decisions where you're weighing the rights of the public based on the rights of the individuals, their property owner's rights, they have to be able to do something with their, to get a reasonable, you know, return on their investment within, within, but there are court cases and laws and things that come into that. But really, at the, and at the end of the day, the zoning ordinance must be fair and reasonable, and how you administrate that zoning ordinance must be fair and reasonable. And so keep that in the back of your head when you're looking at these things. A good master plan is a good defense in any zoning litigation. So if you look at your master plan and feel that, is it reflective of what the community is? Is it reflective of where the community wants to be? But also know the zoning ordinances shouldn't exclude otherwise unlawful land uses, but that, and there are some exceptions to those rules, and sometimes there are special rules, and that's the reason I chose that image dealing with extraction, is that they have special rules in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and there are other land uses that we planners call BOBOs, locally unwanted land uses, that you have to have. And so sometimes those are often some of the toughest decisions that planning commissions and township boards have to look at. In those cases, procedure really matters. Procedure always matters, but that procedure is laid out in the zoning ordinance, and you should go step by step. You should require, if applicants are seeking zoning relief, so if they're looking to the ZBA for a variance, if they're looking to you for a waiver, they need to follow procedure. But also, sometimes there's a temptation with a tough decision to set it aside, and maybe it'll go away, or maybe it'll die down. Actually, with zoning issues, you need to deal with them in a prompt manner. That's a manage, that's again, being fair and due process, treating everyone the same. We said this over and over, but we wouldn't say it over and over unless it hadn't happened in other many, many communities, since the zoning decisions need to be made in an open meeting. And also, don't express your opinion regarding pending zoning decisions unless all those facts have been in an open meeting. Something to talk about it in the parking lot, or when you get here, just before the meeting. But remember that you are an appointed member, and you have certain duties, and you're the face of the township. Any questions on those decisions and findings? We've been kind of taking them as we've gone along.
No, I think the, the, the list of findings of fact are important to go through, one by one. And then sometimes it's a little bit overlooked. You know, it's hard to go through all those individually, because each person has a different mindset as to what they want to see for those conditions. So that's why I think with all of us here, you know, the seven people we are generally here to help make that variety happen to where, okay, we didn't meet this, we didn't meet this, oh, we did meet this, we did meet. So then we do. And I, when you talk about your summaries and such, those are helpful for us to know that it met those conditions. Because that helps me when I'm home with my laptop looking at stuff for a meeting, and I'm going, okay, I'm reading this thing. I'm trying to look through, Carla Wardman, I'm trying to look through Kelly Firm and all the stuff. So I look at that stuff, I read it.
Yeah.
You know, it helps me out anyway.
Well-
Thank you.
You're welcome, and we appreciate all of your hard work, too. Terms of risk management, you really, you can't avoid litigation, especially, you're also a growing community, you're going to see a lot more development pressure in the next few years. You can manage that by, again, consistent rules and procedures, treating everybody fairly, avoiding those conflict of interests, and keeping accurate and complete records. And really, at the end of the day, and to look at those and remember that in terms of, if you have a conflict of interest, it's that you're the applicant, they're a relative, a business associate, associate, close ties. And sometimes if you have to ask. So if you, if you feel like you might have a conflict of interest, as your township attorney said, by the Enabling Act, the rest of the planning commission votes on it. And I have definitely seen where somebody said, I feel like I have a conflict of interest, and the rest of the board said, oh, no, you don't, and we need you here. But that procedure is for you to state the nature of the conflict. And when you've been voted that you do have a conflict of interest, that you abstain from any discussion or voting. And then the minutes reflect that absenteeism reason. Also had different municipal attorneys say that if you have a conflict of interest, ideally you should leave the room. Because even your physical presence, how you communicate with body language and your facial expression, that's communication. So if you leave the room, there's, no one can say that you tried to influence what was going on. Finally, zoning must provide a reasonable use. That is not what is the most profitable, so it's just what's reasonable. If you support your decisions with findings based on the review standards, you're going to be fine. You follow proper procedures, you're going to be fine. In case law, it's emerging in state and federal courts. And then if you're not fine, you've got professionals here to help you, and those are extraordinary circumstances. But at the end of the day, treat everybody fairly, do everything in an open meeting, and go back to your zoning warrants, your bylaws, and always, always go by the procedures that are laid out there. So that's the, that's all I have. And happy to answer any questions and hope that this was useful.
We'll have our questions in the future.
Yeah.
I think a lot of it was useful. Took a few notes. I can't write fast enough sometimes, my shorthand's not good.
Well, I'll leave it around your packet, and again, if you need any clarification on anything, either myself, anyone from the Kelly Firm, I'm sure, is available to you. And then also, this is my colleague Mateo Paslaka. He-
We were going to make him get up and-
You're going to make him get up? So maybe that should be under the planner's report.
Mr. Chair-
But he's available to you as well.
That was our little sidebar. His commissioner, Hunter, wanted to know, like, Mateo was back there, so can I?
Well, he's going to be it.
He's, he's going to step right up.
Mr. Chair, can I clarify something?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so as part of my presentation, I want to make sure I don't confuse you. I touched on a third type of motion, which I didn't explain well, which is motions for reconsideration. This is what I meant. If the planning commission votes on something, and they decide they want to change their mind, either at that meeting or a different date, a motion for reconsideration can be brought. However, say that Commissioner Knoll, Commissioner Munwig, onward, all four, all four of these commissioners voted no on the original motion, and they, they prevailed, they won on that motion. Mr. Ballard, if you're the odd one out, you voted yes. Only one of the commissioners who voted on the prevailing side of the motion can now bring the motion for reconsideration.
I do remember that.
That is what I was trying to explain, that I did a poor job explaining, so I wanted to just clarify so you're not confused. Yes.
Since you brought that up, the original motion was made in January. Now we're in February. What do we do for research?
That's going to depend on a lot of factors. For example, if there's already been a reliance, for example, on a developer on a certain land use decision, and they've started expending money, you're going to have a huge liability issue if you reopen that. Really, you're going to have to look to your planner, your township attorney to decide when that type of motion is appropriate. But usually it's only when, it's only to be made in the meeting where the initial decision was made, or the immediately preceding meeting. You shouldn't be making reversing decisions months, months after. You're going to open yourself up to huge liability.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. How and where can I get my hands on the state acts that were mentioned earlier, or state laws, so that I can do, in doing my personal research, so I can-
If you're only public act 110 on all of us?
Yeah. Could I be nannying for one thing?
I have them printed in my briefcase, because I'm the new guy.
Well, if you ever want them, I can provide them to you digitally. Do you have a, do you want me to send them to you at your email address?
Sure.
Okay, I can do that.
Mr. Chair, that suggests that she sent all the planning-
I can do that. Just don't hit reply all and talk about a specific zoning decision.
We don't have anything to do between three and four, Mark.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
I'm happy to do that.
I think we're winding down. Hopefully, we appreciate both of you tonight.
Thank you.
Your comments and your efforts. It's a hard task to put this for everyone to understand. I guess it's the way of saying, because I don't understand all of them. It takes me over and over again sometimes, and I always learn the hard way. When I make those mistakes, I remember better.
That's why we do a, this training up here.
And I think it's good. Thank you so much for being here tonight and putting that forward to us. We do have, on our new business, one more edition of discussion, I guess we'll call it, in essence, with the- The discussion on zoning ordinance article 10.1 noise. Who wants to start with that?
Mr. Chair, I can just give a short overview of the law.
Yes, please.
So the ordinance review committee had on their work schedule to look at section 10.1, day 100 noise for generators. Because when generators stick on either for maintenance or for power outages, they generally have a noise level that's greater than what's allowed. So what this does is it adds another exemption for generators, saying that they would be exempt if they were there for, on for maintenance, and there are certain 30 minutes for continued noise for weekly maintenance, no more than 60 minutes for continued noise on monthly maintenance or for power outages. So this has been at the ORC, they've looked at it a couple of times. It's come to you, just to get any input. I think, Mr. Ballard, you're the only one who hasn't seen it before. If you're all comfortable with this, the next step would be to call a public hearing, and-
And move forward.
Move forward.
Yeah. Does everybody understand that right now? Yeah, okay. So really, I don't really want to make any more comments. I think we just have to move forward.
Do we need a motion, or do we need an agreement?
Oh, at this time?
I think you just need agreement and to give direction to staff to notice for a public hearing.
But we, we don't need to make a motion to do that.
No, no.
We could just all agree together and move this forward.
I agree.
Yeah, go in for a public hearing, right? I agree. Mr. Attorney, you agree?
Yes.
Okay, good. Mr. Ballard, did he should present?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That works like this, laughing, looking in the right direction.
Yes.
Now, Ed, do you know all about the, what we're going to do here for this, right?
The noise thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you got one, you got a noise maker.
The noise thing?
He's got a noise maker. Let's go into item number 12 on the agenda, which is communication, the committee reports. Honestly, economic development committee, it's in the wind. But that's, I don't know, anybody's fault. That's on the committee, it certainly isn't their fault. Things are moving in directions through the township's supervisory and people having discussions with new development coming forward, which we don't have control over. I'll just leave it at that. And then with ordinance review committee meetings, I haven't been to all of them lately, I've been to some. And the biggest thing that we're trying to move forward with right now, and Megan could help, are the signage ordinance that we're working on. And what she discussed earlier, has a lot of regulatory things that came out of either federal or state criteria that we're trying to put into place where we have correct ordinance to then follow up with. But we have some other things we want to move forward with, maybe with some size and lettering and stuff like that. But not, and another big issue was the recopy, remember? John, we talked about huge signs, and they just want to put new copy on it. That's still kind of a battle to get over yet. So I don't know at this point in time if we're going to go into any more discussion. Planner and engineer reports, we don't have anybody here because they're not here, Mr. Well, excuse me. We do have Carla Wardman here, so I don't know if you want to make any more comments at this point in time.
Well, the only thing is, I did want to-
Introduce Mateo.
I did want to introduce Mateo Paslaka. He's here Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I did meet him once, I can't remember, I didn't remember him.
And you also may see him here at planning commission meetings if for some reason I can't attend.
Oh, good.
So.
Good, that's breaking the ice.
Yeah, no, I'm just happy to be aboard. Everyone's been very nice, and everyone's been very helpful, and it's obviously kind of an exciting time to be a part of the township.
Oh, we got some stuff coming.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like. So plenty, plenty of things to, uh-
Was he in any of the meeting's meetings?
Yes.
Okay, so he knows we got stuff.
Yeah, I took the notes.
All right.
It was, I met most of you. I think this is my first time with Mr. Ballard, but yeah, whatever I can do, just let me know.
Thank you for your time and introduction.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Moving forward, we have a chairman next.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Old, what?
Just one more thing. I just thought I'd point out to all the commissioners, Sharp Engineering puts a report in the trustee board packet monthly that is a very detailed report to the trustee board. So if you want to know a lot of the details that Sharp Engineering is doing, you might want to have a look at that, and that will fill you in on some of those questions that you may or may not have. Thank you.
All right, we're going to adjourn now. Send, uh-
Thank you.
I got the time.